The meeting of the City Council Public Financing Authority to order. City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Mosher.
Here.
Councilmember Bolton.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Burns.
Here.
Mayor Vandermark.
Here.
Councilmember McKeon.
Here.
Councilmember Strickland is absent. Councilmember Calmick.
Here.
I'd like to announce that pursuant to Resolution 2001-54, Councilmember Strickland's requested permission to be absent. With no objections, the minutes will reflect permission was granted. Also pursuant to Charter Section 309, our city attorney, Michael Gates, has requested permission to be absent tonight. And sitting in the meeting, in his place is Senior Deputy City Attorney Connor Hyland.
Thank you. City Councilmember comments? Would anyone like to make a comment? Councilmember Calmick.
Thank you, Mayor. So I honestly wish I wasn't here tonight. I contracted COVID like a week and a half ago, which was the reason I wasn't at the meeting on Monday. We had actually had a vacation scheduled. But fortunately, I guess, that got canceled. On Wednesday, at about 6:00 in the morning, I was woken up by my son thrashing against this crib as he was having a febrile seizure. We had to call 911, and our friends at the fire department arrived. And I'd like to thank the crew of Huntington Engine 42, Captain Kevin Shanahan, Acting Engineer Jeffrey Nair, firefighter paramedic Scott Stiles, firefighter paramedic Seth Adams, ambulance operator Aaron Lewis, and ambulance operator David McCarter for coming and helping my son and my wife, to a certain extent, on getting them to chalk in a very efficient manner and making sure that my son is okay. And he came home that afternoon. And I'd like to thank Captain Eric Blaska for going to pick my wife and son up at the hospital because I was at home and quarantined with COVID, and we were unable to go get him, or get them. So I'd like to thank, again, from the bottom of my heart, our friends and family here at the fire department and all of our EMS staff for that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Bolton?
Thank you. "So the people do not yield their sovereignty to the bodies that serve them." That's a quote that I think many folks in this room could agree with. "The people insist on remaining informed to retain control of the legislative bodies that they have created." These two sentences are in the introduction of the Brown Act, the state's government transparency law. Government transparency flows from the same values, the people's sovereignty and local control, that are often cited to justify the importance of charter cities and home rule. Imagine that. I hope the city government will be consistent in its regard for the values of the people's sovereignty and local control. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I want to begin by acknowledging the terrible events that took place over the past weekend and to reinstate that political violence has no place in our society, and it is never the answer to our differences. My heart goes out to all of the victims and their families during this very difficult time. Our calls for unity must be sincere and rooted in a shared commitment to truth and understanding. It is only through honest dialogue and a collective effort to address the root causes of violence and division that we can hope to build a more united and compassionate society. This means implementing concrete actions and policies that foster genuine community engagement and bridge building. One such effort was our now-defunct Community Cafe, which sought to bring neighbors from all parts of our community together in conversation to build understanding and connections. Unfortunately, this successful initiative was canceled by the current council majority, representing a missed opportunity to promote and work toward the very unity we so desperately need. Additionally, the decades-old Human Relations Committee, and formerly the Human Relations Task Force, whose vision was for Huntington Beach to be a community where all people feel respected, valued, and free from discrimination and violence, was also dissolved by this council majority. This committee's mission was to inspire and promote mutual understanding, respect, safety, and the well-being of all in our community through education and engagement. Honest calls to action include reinstating programs like the Community Cafe and the Human Relations Committee, and committing to policies that address the underlying issues of hate and division. We must go beyond words and take tangible steps to create a safer and more inclusive community for all. Thank you.
Councilmember McKeon?
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to make some comments on the airshow to update the community. So the actions of the previous council majority actually led to the litigation of the airshow. Did you know that they had over 10 months to find an amicable solution in order to prevent litigation and refused to even meet with the applicant? Did you know that there was even a meeting set up with the applicant? And then that Acting City Manager, along with members of the city council and the city participants, actually no-showed to that meeting? They could have put their personal differences aside and shown leadership to find an amicable solution, concessions, et cetera, for the benefit of both parties, but instead decided to not even meet after several attempts by the applicant? Was this because of personal animosity, politics, poor business acumen, incompetence? We may never know. This is another mess and knot that we had to untie from the previous city council. Because of the lack of leadership, animosity, and desire to find an amicable solution to avoid litigation, the airshow is not coming back unless a settlement was reached. It was over. It was finished. The airshow creates $120 million economic impact to our local economy over three non-summer days. People have been questioning the Economic Impact Report by destination analysts, but they are one of the top firms who perform economic impact reports for several large events in companies like the Byron Nelson PGA, the NBA All-Star Game, the LA Marathon, the Firestone Grand Prix, Louder Than Life Festival, and the 2018 U.S. Open of Surfing, amongst others. People have disputed the report that the airshow brings in the reported $3.7 million to our local economy in tax revenue. But the in-plan method used in the economic impact report is also used by several other large events and companies, and is the global standard. The John Wayne Airport uses it every year for their annual economic impact report. And Boeing also uses in-plan for estimated economic impact reports for development, like adding a future manufacturing plant. To say the airshow doesn't bring in money to our local economy or is a non-zero amount is absurd. If people can't agree that the number is 3.75 million, I think it's safe to say that we can all agree that the airshow brings in at least $1 million in tax revenue. In 2022 and 2023, the city brought in $53 million in sales tax revenue, which is slightly over $1 million per week. The city also brought in $14.4 million in hotel TOT tax revenue, or roughly $300,000 per week, for a total of $1.3 million in sales tax and TOT per week. The airshow, of course, contributed to that 1.3. And every retail business owner I've spoken to, from restaurants to sandwich shops to liquor stores, all say the airshow weekend is their biggest weekend of the year by far, and it's not even close. They all stated that their businesses actually increased at least 25% during the airshow. With all that, it's safe to say the airshow at least brings in $1 million in tax revenue over three non-summer days. If the airshow is here for 30 years, bringing in at least $1 million per year with the $4.9 million settlement amount, yes, 4.9, not 7 million, that's a 500% return on our investment. Most people get excited about a double-digit ROI, let alone a 500% return. The $4.9 million in damages we pay is even spread out over six years, which still allows the economic impact to the city to be a net positive. The airshow also brings in ancillary economic benefits. With global attraction, it brings in over 700,000 visitors, 86% of which said they will return to the city, which means more economic impact from the money they spend. Other large-scale events have seen how successful the airshow has been on City Beach and also want a part of that. Darker Waves was a huge success, and we are currently working with other large events on City Beach. This is our premier event, and also the premier event on the West Coast, which brings in immeasurable amounts of free marketing that puts Huntington Beach on the world stage. The free market this brings towards the city is massive. I understand the heartburn regarding the concessions provided in order to reach a settlement, but cities provide concessions to large-scale events all the time because of the large economic impact these larger events create. Most cities often offer in-kind support in the form of infrastructure improvements, traffic management, public safety, and other public services for their large-scale events. Comic-Con International. San Diego Invests in Public Safety, Traffic Management, Infrastructure. America's Cup in the City of San Francisco. They invest in waterfront improvements. They spend millions on upgrading piers, enhancing public spaces, improving transportation. Coachella. The Rose Bowl, the Rose Parade. They invest heavily in hosting the annual Rose Bowl game and the Tournament of Roses. They allocate funds for security, traffic control, public services. The LA Marathon. The City of LA spends more than $500,000 to control traffic, close streets, patrol the route. And also, the Department of Water chips in another $112,000 a year. And Australia, the Gold Coast Airshow, that city's paying $1.7 million per year for five years, plus they are covering $500,000 in public safety costs. It was so successful that that city in Australia has committed another $700,000 a year to continue to grow the event. These events bring economic impact to these cities. Otherwise, the cities wouldn't do it. We also passed gate fees last month for each ticket sold at large events that will help offset public safety costs. The settlement is unique, and that is not just an outflow of money, but rather allows us to recoup our damages by the income it will bring into the city over multiple years and commits this premier event to continue to be held in our city for years to come. These concessions are a baseline, and there will be opportunities to work with the applicant to create more beneficial terms for both the city and the airshow. It's easy to play Monday morning quarterback and nitpick the settlement, but this is the danger of politicizing lawsuit settlements because not everyone is operating with all the facts and variables that led to this decision. Navigating litigation and legal settlements is one of the hardest jobs we have to do as city council members as we have to weigh the risks and the cost-benefit analysis in order to make a decision that is in the best interest of the city and the taxpayers. If we politicize every lawsuit, we would significantly damage the city's negotiating position and thereby damage our ability to be successful in the many lawsuits a city has to deal with. Every council member up here was involved in the many closed-door meetings during the various rounds of settlement negotiations, and to say so otherwise is patently false. Again, if true leadership, business acumen, and prudent decision-making was exercised by the previous city council majority, this lawsuit would have been prevented. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to supplemental communications. Do we have any supplemental communications for this portion?
Yes, we do, Mayor. We received four email communications regarding the short-term rental program update.
Public comments pertaining to study session. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Yeah, we have seven signed up to speak. I'm gonna go ahead and call everyone's name. Catherine Levesseur. Jean Young. Katie Ing, or Ing, I'm sorry if I said that wrong. Gregory Kelly. Terry Hudgens. Phil Larson.
At this time, the city council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the study session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment on items may do so in person by filling out a request to speak form and delivering it to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless a volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the city council's administrative assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire city council at city.council@surfcity-hb.org. First speaker, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Vandermark and council members. My name is Catherine Levesseur. I am a Huntington Beach resident since 1999. I've rented my home on Airbnb since 2015, and I have been passionately vocal, advocating for tax and regulated short-term rentals in Huntington Beach and Sunset Beach for the last seven years. I have been permitted to operate a short-term rental since the existing program rolled out in 2021, and I'm currently in the process of renewing my STR permit for the third time, which is almost like applying for my initial permit. It's that arduous. I'm also the point of contact for Huntington Beach Short-Term Rental Alliance and a volunteer Airbnb community leader for Orange County. These roles put me in front of a lot of hosts. The feedback I get from hosts in Huntington Beach and my own personal experience in applying for an STR permit is so frustrating that it leaves many hosts angry at the city for making the permit process so difficult. It can't be good for staff either. If I was grading the city, and this is hard because I'm always trying to be positive, but if I was grading the city right now for the current short-term rental program, I give the city a D minus. That is bad. There are many opportunities for automation in the permit process, from collection and remittance of TOT and T-Bid to applying for the permit. The city doesn't even send out reminder notices to renew our permits, which leaves us all in fear that we're gonna lose the opportunity to renew our permits. We get a reminder to get the business license. We get a reminder to pay our TOT and T-Bid. But we don't get a reminder to renew our permits. And I know someone in Sunset who lost their ability to short-term rent because their permit expired. So like, by the time you get your permit, like, a few short months later, you have to go through the whole thing again. It's bad. It's really bad. So the last thing I want to say is that's on the study session, to concentrate unhosted short-term rentals in the downtown area, I don't think that that's smart. I think that short-term rentals should be dispersed through the city so that, you know, it just spreads out. It's not all concentrated in one area. Allow all the city to participate in the tourism economy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Jean Young, and I'm actually not from Huntington. I'm from Bixby Knolls, section of Long Beach. But Long Beach recently, four years ago, went through an ordinance development process for short-term rentals. I also represent Long Beach hosts in a hosting club we have in Long Beach with close to 400 members now. So I'm really encouraged that Huntington Beach is studying and looking at the short-term rental program. I feel that in looking at your presentation, it had many valuable insights, but the proposed cap of 200 unhosted permits is arbitrary, and it doesn't really reflect the dynamic nature of the housing market. I think when leasing wise consultants worked with the city and did a lot of public meetings and workshops and hearings on short-term rentals, they had suggested that that number be tied to a percentage of housing stock, whether you decide it's 0.5% or 0.75 or 1%. So that would give you a little bit more room for flexibility, for flux with the Olympics in 2028, and the idea that you may capture some water sports and tourism as a result of that. I also feel that short-term rentals should be dispersed throughout Huntington as they are in Long Beach. Now, we had one small section that recently opted out involving just actually three properties in that area. But you can have hosted and unhosted, and there is a cap of 800 unhosted in Long Beach, but in various sections of Long Beach. So they're not just concentrated in the coastal zones or in the downtown area. And I think that's good because it allows small host operators the opportunity to engage in that business, and it brings a multiplier effect to their neighborhood where they have a little extra money for property taxes, for upkeep for their property, to maintain their property, and then they are able to spend that. If they go to a local restaurant, the restaurant owner is able to give their child piano lessons, let's say. And then, you know, onward and onward, the money, it creates an infusion of money in the local economy. So I don't think that should be focused or concentrated in just one or two sections of Huntington, but I would recommend that it be spread throughout the city. And then I would encourage you to have a voluntary collection agreement with all online travel agencies so that the collection of tot, or the transient occupancy tax could be seamless.
Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Katie Ing. I'm a 17-year resident of Huntington Beach, and I also have an active STR permit. I'm here tonight. I'm happy to see that you guys are talking about short-term rentals and possibly the expansion of short-term rentals. I am in favor of the expansion of short-term rentals. I think we have a really low number here in Huntington Beach, around 200. We are hosted, and I think we are in the minority that are actually hosted short-term rental. I'm requesting tonight, as you guys talk about the expansion or possible expansion of the ordinance, to consider adding ADUs to the ordinance. When the ordinance was passed back in January of 2021, there was very few ADUs built at the time. I think a lot of that had to do with COVID. During COVID, the City of Huntington Beach shut down, and planning permits were really hard to get. So I think there was a backlog. I think since then, yes, you've seen some ADUs built in the city. I don't know what the number would be if people are even interested in a short-term rental. But I'll tell you, for my property currently, I can rent out my main house and live in my ADU and have eight guests. Eight guests, eight cars, eight trash, noise, all of that kind of stuff. I live in a quiet neighborhood in the non-coastal zone, and I think a better approach for my neighborhood would be to rent out my ADU and live in my main house, still keeping it hosted. I'm a fan of it being hosted in the non-coastal zone. I think a cap is good. Putting a cap on short-term rentals, raising the cap, there's no cap now, but raising it and capping it probably would be something good for the city to look at. And I'm just thinking that we need to think outside the box. You all are talking about large events. The city hosts. The city hosts a ton of large events. We only have 200 short-term rentals, which means if the hotels are full, those short-term rentals are full. People are going to Costa Mesa, Laguna Beach, and elsewhere and giving their TOT tax there instead of bringing it to HB. I think that just like Huntington Beach doesn't want Sacramento how to tell us how to do our business and how to run our city, I think same is true in the neighborhoods. Let homeowners decide what property, if I have two structures on my property, let homeowners decide what is best for my community and my neighborhood. And I appreciate your time and thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Greg Kelly. I'm a resident of Huntington Beach. I have a hosted STR near Beach and Adams. I want to address the importance, actually, of having the short-term rentals because, as you probably know, most, the average American can't stay at the Hyatt the Hilton or Pesea, which run around $500 a night. Our short-term rentals allow the middle-class people to be able to stay in Huntington Beach, sure. There's other hotels that can stay back, like was it Huntington Suites, the Best Western, the Starlight Inn, which aren't really that nice of hotels at all. Before you get to nicer hotels, you've got to be five miles away from the beach. So I feel we do actually fit a service, a niche that is actually not addressed. If we didn't have short-term rentals, you would have a large percentage of people that would want to go to a beach community and go somewhere else. One other thing I want to address is the taxes. Approximately, I assume we have around 200 short-term rentals. That means you have 200 people submitting 200 checks four times a year. That's about 800 different transactions. In other cities, Airbnb and Verbo, they allow Airbnb and Verbo to collect the taxes for the hosts, and you would get four checks a year. One from Airbnb, one from Verbo, four times a year. You wouldn't have to do, and you would have a computerized list. You would have one company actually running it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Phil Larson. I'm currently renewing my STR permit. Since I started doing short-term rentals in Huntington Beach, it's allowed me to retire and pay my bills without having to use my retirement money. So a big plus for me. And also, I've had people from all over the world before the pandemic come to my place to stay, which is a house. And it offers something that hotels don't, which is everything private, keep all the kids together in one place, not have to get two or three different rooms. On top of which, it's much, much, much more affordable for them. So it's been great for my guests. Also during COVID, then I had the international traffic stopped, and then I had people from California, all over California coming. Same thing with families. And they all expressed the same thing. It's like the perfect solution for them to come and stay as a family affordably. So I also agree with what Catherine was saying about it being a very complicated process to get the permit and to renew it. So as I said, I'm in the process of renewing now. So if that could be streamlined, that'd be great. Same thing with the tax situation. I would rather you guys get it without me having to send it, like automatically. I think that would be great. Also, I'd like the option to be able to do unhosted as well as hosted. I've never had a single complaint of any kind since I started doing STRs. And I think that that's because I'm very carefully selecting what people that I'll let come and keeping an eye on what they're doing. So everything's worked out really well for everybody so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yep, hi there. I'm Terry Hudgens from Huntington Beach, and I've gone through the updated study that's going to be discussed or presented or what have you. Couple of comments here from the standpoint of the complaints. And there's a table, there's no page numbers here, but the complaint detail, page seven, at least the way I've numbered them, shows just a significant difference between unhosted and hosted properties that are part of this program. And that unhosted properties have less problems, less complaints, less everything associated with their management. So hosted properties and all the rules and all the regulations and all of the requirements are not buying peace of mind, of mind, peace of mind, or a performance index or indicator that it's getting us anything. It's the unhosted properties are doing better by the numbers here. Secondly, with regards to the numbers, I think we need a denominator to put these incidents in perspective. These incidents on page seven cover two and a half years. Two and a half years, and the worst category is for a home, a hosted property with no one on site. That's the, that's 105 incidents over three, two and a half years. Now, I think a better indicator of what's going on here is if we took those numbers and put it in a denominator with, with a decent denominator in there that said complaints per thousand room nights, or what, how many nights are we seeing actually rented by the VRBO and the other entities in here? Because that's available to us. You have a consultant that we're paying for right now called, I don't know, GOV something or other, and they're performing some kind of service that I'm not sure what service that is, but they're supposedly performing a service for us. Well, there's got to be a better measurement of the incidents per something. I mean, I can go to the hotel, you can go to Hilton, Hyatt, and Pasea, and you can get room nights. You can get how many incidents per room night, and that's a true measure of the turnover of the people that are going through the property. But we have no denominator here, which I think, I'm done.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Roger Bloom. I've been a Huntington Beach resident since 1975. Full disclosure, I have a hosted short-term rental. It's, we have a townhouse that's divided in two, and on the other side of the wall, we have our short-term rental. We also have a unit in back over the garages that's monthly. My concern, and I don't know where you are in the process on this, I just kind of got a notice about this meeting, and I looked at the, the staff stuff. And my concern is that the city seems to be moving full speed ahead with unhosted short-term rentals, and that concerns me a lot. Again, full disclosure, I run a hosted rental, and you can, people can say I'm a hypocrite if you want, but my experience on our block is that my hosted rental has never been a problem for anybody. Half the people on the block don't even know it's there. And there was an unhosted, illegal unhosted rental on the block for quite a while, and everybody knew it was there and everybody hated it. Now, that was an absentee owner up in Pasadena, okay? We had monstrous problems with parties. Weekends, five, four or five cars would descend on the neighborhood, take up all our parking, each one with like one or two people in it. They'd go in. This thing was advertised in the headline on Airbnb, was having a hot tub. That was in the headline, hot tub paradise, or whatever it was. And they just partied all weekend. My children, my daughter's bedrooms opened out into the backyard, which, you know, and then there was a fence, and then there was the backyard with a hot tub. They were exposed to high-volume conversations that would make a sailor blush, okay? And it was just a nightmare. And it was a nightmare. I worked with city staff and code enforcement. They were very good, very cooperative with me, but they were very constrained on what they could do. But they were finally able to get it shut down after a very long time. I think that allowing unhosted rentals, just for the sake of money for the city, is sacrificing residents' quality of life to solve the fiscal problems that you all got yourselves into. And I don't know who did it. I don't care who did it. But what I'm saying is, if you want to put it on the backs of the residents' quality of life to raise some money, I have some ideas. Okay? You could put a fence around Huntington Central Park and charge everybody $5 to go in. You'd make a ton of money. It might, you know, hurt the quality of life a little bit, but you'd make a ton of money. And, you know, the fence with the barbed wire on it, not too aesthetic, but hey, you'd make some money. You can charge, you could institute a program of fireworks permits. Somebody could pay 100 bucks, they could shoot off any damn firework they wanted to anytime, day or night. You know, it might help, it might hurt the quality of life a little bit, but city would be making some money. And here's the one that, you know, you guys really might want to go for. You could charge a vote fee.
Thank you.
For the members to
That concludes public comments. Thank you. Moving on to study sessions, staff, please introduce your report.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Jill Boss, deputy director of community development, and I'm here to provide an update regarding our short-term rental program. As you may recall, city staff presented the last update about our short-term rental program earlier this year in March. A summary of the information presented includes that we have over 200 STR permits issued citywide, collected just under $1 million in TOT in 2023. And since the program's inception, we have seen a decline of unpermitted STRs from over 860 in 2020 to 135 in 2023, as well as a decline in complaint calls. This update will provide additional information that was requested by council, including some enforcement best practices presenting connections between complaints for noise and unhosted STRs and reporting on revenue potential. Although this map was shared with the council last time, it's reused as a reminder that of the 200-plus STRs permitted in the city, over half of the STRs are within the coastal zone and downtown areas, as shown by the dark blue heat circles. To highlight some of our current requirements, they include allowing an unlimited amount of hosted STR citywide, hosted being that the property owner resides on site, allowing unhosted in Sunset Beach, as per the MOU agreement when Sunset Beach was annexed into the city, and STRs were given a limited amount of time to get a permit by 2022, and any STRs would have to be hosted from here on out. Only one STR per operator. We do have $1,000 fines for each confirmed violation, and there's a three-strikes rule within a 12-month period. And then all listings must have a city-issued STR permit number. For best enforcement best practices, many agencies that either permit short-term rentals or prohibit them contract with a third-party vendor. Staff has reached out to staff of other STR programs and met with STR vendors. The services provided by the third-party vendors vary. First and foremost is monitoring, where they track hundreds of rental listings, websites for unpermitted STRs. And in some cases, vendors will also send out compliance letters on behalf of the jurisdiction, notifying the host or owners of their illegal STRs. They offer round-the-clock support via phone and web, as well as recording and documenting complaint calls, and online portals for permitting, registration, tax collection, and reporting. The two highlighted bullet points are services that are not currently provided by our current vendor, and improvements to capitalize on moving forward with a potential new vendor. One of the services we use with our GOV OS vendor is monitoring. As shared earlier, there has been an overall decline of unpermitted STRs, though that number fluctuates throughout the year, as rental listings tend to pop up in the summer, or when the weather is good, or during special events. One thing that I'd like to highlight is that with or without the program, unpermitted STRs are happening in the city and in other cities. So it's a matter of really deciding how to regulate these. This is just a visual snapshot of the unpermitted STRs as of November last year, where the concentration is in the downtown area or coastal zone, but unpermitted STRs do pop up sporadically citywide. With regards to our current permit holders, we do receive some complaints with the top two categories being no owner on site and noise. And these numbers cover a three-year span. In consideration of all the calls to code enforcement, these numbers are overall lower than other reported citywide issues. In total, we have about 156 violations documented over the three-year course of the program, with concentrations near downtown and within the coastal zone, though they do occur citywide. Since it was requested to provide connections between no owner on site and noise violations, the next two slides will visually map where these have been confirmed. For the no owner on site, we had 36 reported, and 14 of them were within the Old Town town lots or downtown coastal areas. For the noise violations, we had 26 reported, and 12 of them were within the downtown areas. There are a variety of coastal cities that have short-term rental programs and several cities that do not. The comparison chart shows that the restrictions in ordinance vary, and it's really up to the jurisdiction of how they want to regulate. Some restrictions include defining the types of rental units, such as home stays or hosted, where the host or owner lives on site, primary, where the host or owner lives on site for a majority of the council, of the calendar year, but rents out the house for like 90 days or during the summer, non-primary, whole-host, vacation rental, which is similar to our unhosted definition. Other limits include locations, such as restricting to certain residential zones, districts, coastal areas, applying a maximum cap of the number of STRs in a given area or a combination of both. Acknowledging that our current inventory of STRs are concentrated within the coastal zone, downtown RMHA lots and Sunset Beach, the following slides are provided to show the actual TOT that was collected in 2023. The coastal zone, as depicted here, encompasses approximately 12,000 units, and as of the end of last year, we had about 38 permitted STRs. Of that amount, 24 were active, meaning they reported at least one quarter of TOT, and the city received over 157,000 in TOT for an average annual per unit of $6,291. In Sunset Beach, which encompasses approximately 650 units, 48 STRs were permitted as of last year, and 34 had remitted TOT payment for a combined total of $281,000 and an average per unit of 8,277. In the town lot and Old Town areas, also known as the state street, the state and city streets or numbered streets, we have approximately 5790 units. We permitted 54 STRs, and 37 were active and paid a total of $209,000 in TOT, for an average of 5654. This slide is a summary of the actual TOT revenue from 2023 within the three areas and charts the differences. Considering that a majority of rentals are unhosted in Sunset Beach, Sunset Beach has the highest reported TOT collected in 2023 and highest annual average. To note, these three areas, coastal zone, Sunset Beach, and Old Town, make up 66% of the 2023 actual revenue citywide. The row at the bottom provides an estimate of the potential TOT revenue using the actual average amounts from the first row. So for example, if the program is expanded to allow, let's say, 200 unhosted STRs, based on the lowest average TOT of $5,600 in the town lot areas, and the highest average of 8,200 in Sunset Beach, the estimated TOT revenue is within the range of 1.1 million to 1.6 million dollars. This 200-number scenario is presented to capture the amount of unpermitted STRs that we currently have in the city, or how it ranges. This range of potential revenue estimates are conservative, as these amounts are based on hosted and some unhosted STRs. If the program were expanded, the conversion of existing hosted STRs would also potentially increase revenue. As you may recognize from the data presented tonight, not all STR holders are actively reporting or remitting. To address these deficiencies, we look at, we're looking at ways to update the program. These are options that council could consider. Enhancing the online portal, our current software vendor has some limitations, and staff has met with other vendors that offer additional services that can improve our registration and tax remit process and create a user-friendly experience. Active reporting, offering enhancements that scrub and search listings and documenting them, and following bookings and rental rates. Under this program, we can consider a use-it-or-lose-it policy, requiring that STRs must actually remit for a minimum timeframe each year. By applying a cap, it can control where unhosted rental units can occur, and in tandem with the use-it-or-lose-it policy, ensure that permit holders must remit TOT, or their permits will be canceled or not renewed. This option could essentially reward the good operators and sort out the bad operators. Introducing a waitlist and auditing components are controls to help ensure compliance and refine the program in steps. As part of this option, it may also involve annual evaluations of the overall program in addition to TOT audits. With all that said, some of these options would involve an update or revision to our current ordinance and policies, including adding language regarding caps on total number of permits, any locational restrictions, allowances for unhosted STRs, and associated enforcement requirements on TOT activity and potential requirements for noise monitoring devices within the STRs or exterior surveillance cameras. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions. And then I also have here Jimmy, our code enforcement manager, Colin, our treasury manager, and Steve, our deputy director of community development, as well as Joyce Sax and Alisa Backstrom for the city treasurer's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any council members have questions? Council member Calmick.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for bringing this back with some recommendations and some updates. I really appreciate all of that. I had a couple of initial questions. Or when you first apply for your STR permit, you get two years, right, for the price of one?
That's correct.
Okay. So you only have to renew after, going into your third year, effectively? Okay. You know, I really, the policy that we brought forward back in 2021 was a very conservative incremental approach. And I think a lot of the strategy here is trying to balance property rights with rent, the rental market, and taking attainable units off, off the market. And that was, one of the things I don't want to do is to take rental units or for-sale units that's farther away from, kind of where something would be considered affordable or attainable, off the market and turn it into an STR. And that's been kind of the policy shift here. I think the rest of this, the policy discussion has been, short-term vacation rentals have been a part of Huntington Beach forever. And how do we best capture and regulate existing business use, I would say? And I think the initial policy, I think, is shown as successful in bringing down the total number of, of unpermitted STRs. And I think a lot of this is to, was to take a look at, well, what are we, what cats are we chasing still? And it seems like a majority of a very high threshold to prove are folks that are operating an unhosted STR. And I spoke with, over the last couple of years, spoken with a lot of residents that have either bad actors or good actors in their neighborhood. And the bad actors for the unhosted one is, they'll have notes inside that said, if the city knocks on your door, tell them that I'm, you know, at the grocery store, or tell them that Bob lives, you know, Bob's here, or tell them you're Bob, and you're the host. And, you know, we'd have no physical description of the permit or a picture of the person in the permit to know whether or not that's not true. And so I think, obviously, some enforcement mechanism there. But I think the idea of a cap is really important here if we were to move forward. Baby steps, I think, are really important here, that there's nothing to say. You know, the Olympics is four years out, that we can't come back next year and evaluate if we make some small changes going forward, that we can then expand that or contract that. We could, you know, lower the cap after that and basically randomly not renew 100 permits, I'm assuming. But I know that the coastal zone is going to be, is going to be forthcoming, and we need to get, I think, ahead of that. And I think bringing folks that are operating, that still want to operate an STR unhosted and still are, even though we have the regulation, are taking the enormous amount of code enforcement time to try to manage that. So why not bring, again, the overall policy was to try to bring folks that are doing something that has happened in Huntington Beach forever and ever into the fold so that we can tax and regulate them in a better manner. There was a woman that, a speaker that asked a question about changing our moratorium on using ADUs for STRs. Am I understanding that that's actually not legal under state law anymore? Could staff comment on that?
That's correct. ADU state law does require that ADUs be rented for periods longer than 30 days. So since STRs are essentially defined as rentals less than 30 days,
Right.
it would disqualify.
Okay. And that is, does that grandfather in existing ADUs that have been issued permits? Or is that now retroactive? So you cannot rent out an ADU, even if it was, you know, 150 years old now, as a STR?
Well, the way that we've been applying it is, there is some grandfathering in prior to that, the date that that was in effect. So 2020 was when that legislation came.
So the state law came into effect in 2020?
For that particular requirement.
Okay. So Benar's went into effect in 2021?
Yeah, our ordinance went into effect early 2021. The state law, I think, passed in 2020, went into effect early 2021. So essentially, when they kind of coincided, so when our law went, when our ordinance went to an effect for short-term rentals, it was, it applied to essentially all ADUs that were built 2020 and earlier.
Okay. So, all right. And so the state law didn't grandfathered in everybody that was already there. Okay, they already had permits. Got it. So yeah, I think, I think that this is, I think this is a good baby step forward. I think all the staff recommendations are worth exploring and bringing back with an ordinance. I think having, exploring a third party to handle taxes and auditing and things like that are going to be really important to streamline the process, to make sure we're actually getting our TOT. And a room night metric, I think one of the speakers brought that up. I think some of this data is a little hard to consume to find correlative data. And I think, understanding, you know, okay, there's 100 violation, 105 violations over three years, but again, I think the correct metric is over how many room nights or how many stays, stay nights is that number accumulated? Because 105 complaints over two, two years, two and a half years is not a lot of complaints. And I think that that was really the metric of doing baby steps as we moved forward here. And I think that that was really the metric of doing baby steps as we move forward here. And obviously, we don't want to change communities and we don't want to do this, but we want to definitely balance, we want to, you know, balance property rights here that folks own these properties and are, you know, want to be able to exercise their rights. Buffers would have been the only thing I'd like to see a little bit more information on potentially. I know that we'd kind of discussed that potentially at the last meeting on how to make sure we don't end up with three unhosted STRs right next to each other. And so that would be, you know, so that somebody doesn't, you know, you've got a hotel row. So I'd be interested to see what best practices are for buffers for other cities if this were to come back. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bolton.
So thanks to the staff for all of the work that you've done and you've actually answered a couple of the questions that I already have. I did want to ask about automated collection of taxes, which I think a couple of folks raised. Had you looked into that and do you have a sense for how efficient that would be if we adopted that?
We did look at that. We've also spoken to some cities that do implement that. There's pros and cons to everything, right? So the con would be, and what we've heard from the Airbnb and VRBO as well, is that when they do collect that, they only provide that information in a lump list. We're not able to discern who in specific individual properties are actually remitting. We just get the lump amount. So, but it is seamless because it just goes through the platform. And then on top of that, you'd also have to make sure you're also collecting those that don't use those platforms. So there would be still some manual ribbons for the permit holders.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. Councilmember Moser.
Thank you. Most of my questions and thoughts have kind of already been mentioned by the previous two council members. One of the owners spoke earlier with regards to not getting reminder notices, but getting reminders kind of about other things. Can you speak to that?
We do send out notices through our system. My understanding is that they go out 30 days before it expires as well as 15 days before it expires. So the only flaw I could see is if the email is incorrect, because we do have individuals renewing their permits. So to a certain degree, it's working for several permit holders. So I think we would need to isolate the particular situation and see and look into that.
Okay. And our reminders are all via email?
That's correct.
Okay. I think that the important thing is to make sure that we are able to enforce, and I know Jimmy has been working hard to do that, and also to audit. So if we are going to proceed with any expansion or even not, that I would want to make sure that whoever is currently or is expanding into this, that we are able to enforce and that we are always responsive. You know, I have spoken to residents who have had, you know, I think, particular residents who have had complaints over time. And my recommendation is always, because oftentimes it's on the weekend when I think we have fewer resources, is to keep complaining, basically, so that there's documentation. But we, of course, would want people not to have to continue to complain, but hopefully get that quick response. So anything that we can do to make things better enforcement, more efficiencies, you know, making sure that we're auditing, I think, is important. Also, what was mentioned is if we do look at doing this, caps are, I think, are important. It was interesting about the state law, because I didn't realize that with regards to the ADUs. So thank you for letting us know about that. And then finally, I think it is important for everything that we do, that the one gentleman mentioned, of having that denominator, having the ability to really, you know, understand the metric instead of just like a number and even tying it to things that's helpful, to be providing better measures. So that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Councilmember McKeon.
Thank you, staff, for putting all this together and all the research. For me, this is a very, I'm very sensitive to this as it relates to quality of life incidents and disturbances. So Jimmy, can you kind of walk through, for me, if I was going to consider any kind of expansion, I would like to understand how code enforcement could have like a rapid response team when there is quality of life disturbance, noise, parking. So could you kind of walk the community through if we were to expand this, what that would look like? And then maybe touch on how like a lion's share of your reporting is for currently non-hosted units? And maybe there'll be, if we went, allow non-hosted units, that might free up your time for these, you know, rapid response. Can you kind of walk through those details?
Yes, absolutely. Happy to. We are a seven-day operation in code enforcement. So every time we get a complaint, we do follow up on the complaint either the same day or the very next day. In terms of the current situation, when there's a noise complaint, let's say it's at 2:00 in the morning, we do have the hotline set up. People can call that number and they can be connected to the live operator. There's a script of how we created this response where the operator will contact the owner, have the owner respond within one hour to correct the noise issued. We get that report the very next day and we do follow up on that. If the operator cannot get a hold of the designated owner, then the script will prompt the operator to contact HBPD, non-emergency number, to have patrol respond, and the officers will respond to that situation. And we do follow up and get the reports the very next day as well, based on police response.
What's, I mean, what do you think is the fastest you could get to the scene if there was a complaint like that?
We do not work late evenings or midnight to 6:00. But I would say within, if the event is occurring, let's say 10:00 PM, we can respond to it by the very next morning, early morning, and we'll get those reports to follow up on.
I mean, like if there's a disturbance and noise, et cetera, I mean, how quickly could I guess the city address that or get to that property to try to remedy the situation? Like, could the police get there within 30 minutes? I mean, you guys, that's all I'm talking about, like a rapid response, is if there's more STRs in the community, in the city, and now it's creating quality of life disturbances? I would like to understand how, what a rapid response would look like if someone is complaining because their neighbor, you know, there's noise complaints or is disturbing their quality of life. How quickly could the city get to that property to address that situation, do you think?
I could.
Chief. But Captain Garcia could take that one.
Yeah, after hours, once we get the call, we can respond within a few minutes, depending on the call volume, obviously. But something in the morning, we can respond within five, 10 minutes.
Okay.
Well, we'll take care of the problem at that time, whether we get information or give them a first response if it's a party call. And then I'm working with Jimmy. They will get notified that we responded as well, and then they can follow up the next day.
I guess how could the community know the non-emergency number to call, right? So it's not tying up like 911. And I mean, I'm trying to kind of war game out potential pitfalls if I'm a neighbor and this happens in my neighborhood, you know, who do I call? How quickly can it be resolved?
Correct. Even if it's non-emergency number, we'll still place the call on our computer for officers to respond.
No, I meant more like an education to the community of like, what is a non-emergency number to call, right? So they know. I mean, you know, I know that's probably hard to get out to everybody, but just something to think in. I'm just realistically trying to envision problems that'll occur if we raise the cap and we go to pursue potentially non-hosted. Obviously, there's going to be more. And I'm very sensitive to the quality of life issues that could occur. So I just want to understand how, what a rapid response would look like to remedy that situation.
And Councilmember McKeon, if I may just add to that. So right now, the subject property, they have to notify their neighbors every year with their renewal permit. So the requirements are two neighbors to the left, two neighbors to the right, three directly in front of the subject property, and three behind them. And each and every time they do their renewal, they have to submit a letter to the neighbors. We ask for a copy of that certified mail. On that letter, there's a phone number for code enforcement with instructions, what they can do to report noise violations. They just call the number, the hotline, push option three for the 24/7 operator, and then we get those reports the very next day as well, just to respond to that. So the neighbors are well aware, each and every year when the permit's renewed, they get that same information, that same letter with a phone number on how to reach and file complaint.
Perfect. What about, like, parking? Like, how would you, are there any kind of parking requirements with the permits, the STR permits? I mean, are guests allowed a certain number of cars? Is that a detail currently that exists?
The operator has to provide a parking plan to the city when they submit an application for a permit. It's typically onsite parking on the driveway that's required.
Okay, so enforcing that, I would imagine the same thing, right? Like, if a neighbor's complaining about multiple cars, that could obviously be an enforcement mechanism?
Yes.
Okay. You think that's tough to enforce?
It would depend on the nature of the parking violation, like what.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, if they're only allowed onsite parking, but they're parking in the street, I'm just envisioning, again, disturbing the quality of life, there's unhosted rental, the guests have three or four cars, they're chewing up parking on the street, they're not in the driveway, like, what happens in that situation? So that's a little more complex. I'd like to look into that and then be able to get back to you with that one. Okay, that's good. We talked about last time, auditing. Where are we currently, guys, on the auditing? I know that's, we're almost done, right? Because I think there was an issue, I don't know, whatever, a couple of months ago about, you know, self-reporting, and we're trying to do an audit to see what's currently existing in our STRs. Has that been completed?
Are you speaking of auditing the revenues or auditing the number of STRs?
The latter. Latter, and then also, yeah, like, which ones aren't, and so which are not, how many are not reporting and potentially like lost revenue that we're not receiving right now if they were permitted? So kind of bringing those unpermitted out of the shadows, if you will.
We are not currently going through the audit program, but with one of the vendors that, or with one of the new vendors, if we select, they could help us complete that auditing of existing permits as well as potentially the expansion of it. So we would need some assistance in that realm.
Then what about, would the vendors be able to scan, I guess, the third-party Airbnb, VRBO to see how many are non-permitted, like illegal, STRs if we were to expand it? Is that something that's easily obtainable where they can do a cross-reference?
Yes, based on the current demonstrations we receive from the potential vendors, they have the capability of doing that.
Okay, cool. And then, lastly, lastly, I like the buffer idea. And then for me, like, if we're going to, when you guys bring this stuff back, I'd be interested in exploring this, but only as a pilot program. So like a 12-month from whatever, maybe later this year, whatever the expansion is, and then capture one full summer season and then come back and see what that looks like before we would agree to maybe make this more permanent. That's it.
Okay, thank you for the report. We are now going to reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council Public Financing Authority. City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Moser?
Here.
Councilmember Bolton?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Burns?
Here.
Mayor Vandermark?
Here.
Councilmember McKeon?
Here.
Councilmember Kalmak?
Here.
I'd like to report that pursuant to Resolution 2001-54, Councilmember Strickland has requested permission. And if no objections are received, will be granted permission to be absent from tonight's meeting. Any objections? All right. And also, our city attorney, Michael Gates, pursuant to Charter Section 309, has requested permission to be absent. And in his place attending tonight is Senior Deputy City Attorney Connor Highland.
Thank you. Tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by our Huntington Beach Police Captain, Oscar Garcia.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which has been established, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the working best of all.
Our invocation will be delivered by our Huntington Beach Police and Fire Chaplain, Bob Ewing.
Would you please bow with me? Almighty God, we come into your presence with grateful hearts for this great nation and city in which we live and serve. Father, I thank you for this council who serves so faithfully the needs of our people. Grant them wisdom tonight as they make decisions that impact each of us. Thank you for city staff who aid in the decision-making and the implementation of those decisions. Thank you for our public safety agencies, and I ask that you watch over and protect the men and women who serve so diligently. Father, it was less than two weeks ago that we gathered to celebrate our independence. What a great day it was as we honored and remembered the occasion of July the 4th, 1776, and the subsequent years. Yet, Father, by the end of that day, evil had reared its ugly head and brought sorrow and anguish into our city. And then our nation watched this past Saturday when evil once again struck. Father, I ask for comfort and healing for those who were impacted by those acts of lawlessness, including our fire and police members that showed up. Eternal God, we in whose perfect kingdom no sword is drawn but the sword of righteousness, no strength known but the strength of love and peace. May you mightily spread your spirit that we may all live under the banner of that love and peace. May we in gentleness and love check the hasty answer, choke back the unkind word, and thus short-circuit some of the bitterness and the unkindness that sometimes overwhelms us. I ask this of you, O God, who alone can give us the grace to so act. I thank you, Father, for your presence with us today. In your most holy name, Lord, I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Announcement of supplemental communications. Do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor. For consent calendar, item nine, a memo received from Lieutenant Toby Archer regarding a pricing adjustment to the agreement with All City Management Services, Inc., for crossing guard services. I suppose that will, the supplemental communication will adjust the recommended action. I'll reflect that in the record. And also, for ordinance for introduction, item 11, email communication received regarding the proposed amendment to the Pipeline Franchise Agreement with Cardinal Pipeline LP.
Thank you. Awards and presentations. Chief Haberly, please proceed with the presentation.
Chief McCoy?
I'm here for Chief Haberly. It's my pleasure to introduce Battalion Chief Doug Leach. He manages our junior lifeguard program, and he's going to introduce the group.
Thank you, council. I just wanted to briefly introduce some guests that are with us this evening. This is the 2024 edition of our legacy Junior Lifeguard Exchange with New Zealand. This exchange's been happening since about 1979. It's an opportunity for the youth of both of our countries to share cultural ideas and awareness. They're hosted within our own homes here and the families. So thank you to the, graciously, to the families who've hosted these kids and gotten a chance to really appreciate our local Southern Californian Huntington Beach culture. The group is going to be performing a haka as a thank you to the city and the council and all the residents and the families for us hosting. So I'd like to introduce Vicky Tyler. She's back here. She'll give a quick kind of summary of what the haka means. It's a cultural significance, and then we'll present it up here in just a moment.
So one of the most sincere ways that New Zealanders can show their respect and their appreciation is through the haka. You might be familiar with it through the All Blacks performing it, if you've ever seen them play rugby internationally. So a haka is traditionally performed before going into battle. This particular haka was written that we're going to perform for you, was written by a Maori chief just over 100 years ago. And he wrote it for his teenage son to acknowledge that really extraordinary challenge that every teenager experiences in their transition to young adulthood and adulthood, and the perseverance and resilience required. So when you see the team performing the haka, you'll see them stomping, and that beat is to reflect the heartbeat and the unity of our group. And haka is always performed for those that have come before us, our ancestors, and for those coming in the future. But most importantly, and certainly for tonight, it is to show incredible respect and thanks to those in the room. And when we perform a haka, it's done with incredible pride and sincerity and spirit, and we call that mana. and we call that mana.
Yorinze! Koppa! Ah, ringa ringa, etorona, gaywa, ah, okima! Ah, buuwe! 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 Chikasolua, chukia, kweesama, eki nekoea, tufakaro, pakiya. Eki ah, atsoi, eki ah, atsoi. Riyaaha, etama se wawana, etama sema. Roina, okira, etoera, se wawana, etoera. Ana, 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 buuwe! Ah, buuwe! Chikasolua, buuwe! Chikasolua, chukia, kweesama, eki nekoea, tufakaro, pakiya. Eki ah, atsoi, eki ah, atsoi. Riyaaha, etama se wawana, etama sema. Roina, okira, etoera, se wawana, etoera. Ana, 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 buuwe!
Not a mayor? Just on behalf of the New Zealand team, got a little token gift I want to present to the city.
Thank you so much. That was beautiful. Thank you. Thank you, guys. That was beautiful.
All right. Everybody looking right here? We're going to take a couple of pictures. Ready? One, two, three. Eyes open, don't breathe. Everybody else? Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. That was awesome.
I'm not sure who to give this to.
I'm just, we'll work on it later. We'll deal with it later.
Okay. I was like, all right, see? All right. And then I was looking at the clock, I'm like, it's over. Yeah. Twenty-three? Twenty-three speakers.
Rhonda, I have one. See, I'm an English speaker. English speaker.
Okay, moving on to public comments. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, we do. We currently have 22 people signed up to speak.
Thank you. Would you like to call them up? I'll read my statement after.
Sure, sure. Okay, can I have the sheets? Okay, I'll call up the first 10. Marissa Jackson. TJ England. Stephen Quinn. Leanne Shoup, or Luann Shoup, sorry. Ann Palmer. Amory Hanson. Paula Schaefer. Jean, Jeannie Gooden. Connie Boardman. Wendy Rincon.
At this time, the City Council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment may do so in person by filling out a request to speak form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brannock does not allow discussion or actions on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the city council's administrative assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire city council at city.council@servecity-hb.org. First speaker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Marissa Jackson, and I wanted to officially announce that I will be running for city council. I love Huntington Beach, and I love the people here, and I have a strong desire to serve. As a conservative, patriotic wife and mother of faith who cares deeply about my neighbors, I have a vested interest in the safety and security of our suburban beach community. I see firsthand what's happening as a mother of a young adult, teenagers, and grade schooler. I believe that gives me a unique perspective. I've been president of student government at college, interned at the district attorney's office, and received my bachelor's in political science emphasis in public administration while growing my family, and I currently serve in my church and community in various service roles. A number of people have told me that they are very happy I'm running because I'm giving the people another conservative option to choose from. Others want a variety of people to represent them on city council. I believe I can represent a lot of people who hold the same values. My family has and continues to be a, to be a life of giving and service. I knew even as a youth I was supposed to get involved, and I'm getting involved now. I feel a real urgency to be a voice for truth, and I'm going to, and going to these city council meetings. I feel there's a need for decency and respect as well. I truly do care about the good people of Huntington Beach, and I hope that you will vote for me, um, either on or before November 5th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Luann Nichols Shoup, and I just have one question. About a month ago, Natalie Moser, Barbara Bolton, and Dan Calmack got up and left before a meeting was over, and then last Monday, there was a special meeting, and Natalie Moser, Barbara Bolton, and Dan Calmack did not attend. So I heard that you all are running for city council, but I'm a little confused, a little confused, because you're skipping out on meetings. So do you want to run or, or not? That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm former Mayor Connie Boardman. I'd first like to thank Ocean View School Board Trustee Gina Clayton Tarvin for suing the city to force the council to release the settlement agreement between the city and Mr. Elliott's company, Code Four, the company that currently runs the airshow. She's done the public a huge favor. I think this settlement is the most egregious, disgusting misuse of taxpayer funds and payback to a political crony I have ever seen in the 30-plus years I've lived in this city. I'm grateful the state auditor is examining this settlement and join with the three members of this council who have integrity in urging the state attorney general to investigate this settlement as an inappropriate gift of public funds. Let me tell you why. The gifts given to Mr. Elliott's company include up to $7 million that should be the city's. In addition, the city pays for any environmental assessment. That's another half a million at least, depending on the type of assessment that's done. To my knowledge, the city has never paid for an environmental assessment for a private business before. The council majority also gave their political ally forgiveness of all city fees for the event. Fees have to be based on true costs, so now all the additional costs for added police, firefighters, beach maintenance workers, public works, lifeguards, community service employees, all fall to the city, to the taxpayer, for the next 10 years, because they've given Mr. Elliott a 10-year exclusive contract that can be renewed three times. That's 40 years of fee-free events. Oh, council members, not a majority, but five, five council members can stop the renewal. Code Four also has control of 3,500 parking spots and all the camping spots. Despite being called out by the Coastal Commission for gouging the public, according to his website, Elliott is still charging $4,500 a camping spot for the weekend. That's a gift of over $220,000. And then the city agrees to mitigate county and state fees using city resources. What on earth does that mean? More taxpayer money to pay county and state fees for a private business? As horrible as these giveaways are, Mr. Elliott can transfer the terms of this settlement to another party unless five council members object. So a party that in no way was affected by the oil spill at all could still get up to 40 years of fee-free events, along with all the other benefits. I wonder how much that's worth to Mr. Elliott. Like you, I've heard that Visit Huntington Beach claims that the airshow brings in tens of millions of dollars a year to the city. Unfortunately, they can't back that up with solid data. Read the article in Voice of OC for a better understanding of the estimated revenue. And okay, an airshow brings revenue, but Code Four doesn't have to run it. By giving tens of millions of dollars to Code Four, this council didn't save the airshow, but they certainly lavished Mr. Elliott's company with taxpayer funds.
Thank you. Next speaker.
TJ England, long-term resident. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Tarwin for the lawsuit that forced the majority five to release this secret document showing they gave away our city to Mr. Elliott and his Pacific Airshow. It is an example of corruption I've never seen before at the local level. I can't believe, I can't believe the details in this article, details of the settlement. It's, it's obscene. I'm also here today to thank the press, our reporters and journalists who, with their stories and photographs in Huntington Beach and the nation, are keeping our democracy alive by telling us the truth, not fake news. Thank you, reporter Gustavo Ariel, Arielano, I hope I'm pronouncing it right, Matt Zabo, Mr. Santana Jr., Michael Stanton, Patrice Apadaco, and many others that I can't list here. Thank the LA Times, the Daily Pilot, and the citizens' thoughtful letters to the editors. And also, uh, I don't know if some of you met Geyser Gotchok, the German journalist that was here. She was lovely, and she tells me she is writing a long article about our city. In closing, I have a quote from Beto O'Rourke, a Texan. "There are no sidelines. There's no sitting this one out. There is no hoping that someone else is going to come and save the day. There is no cavalry. We are the cavalry. Vote in November."
Thank you. Next speaker.
Councilmembers, my name is Paula Schaefer. The majority city council members' campaign in 2022 talked about saving the airshow, unleashing city attorney Gates, and rolling out the red carpet for Huntington Beach businesses. As a result, Huntington Beach residents are now stuck with the airshow settlement agreement. Here's how I think those closed-session discussions may have taken place, resulting in the grift that has now been perpetrated on the Huntington Beach residents. Gates did not disclose the complete terms of the settlement to the city council in closed session, and/or the Fab Four never asked any questions and accepted Gates' brief summary of the terms as the best deal that he could get for the city, and/or the, only Tony Strickland may have known of the full terms of the settlement agreement, and/or the Fab Four knew all the terms of the settlement and voted to approve it anyway. Or, and the city, uh, the airshow had a more competent and highly skilled attorney, and/or Gates is incompetent. Or this is what was intended as rolling out the red carpet, resulting in a giveaway of money to the airshow company. Is this what the Fab Four meant when they say promises made, promises kept? On a second note, since we now have three minutes tonight, a rare occurrence, I'd like to say that regarding the charter amendment that you are now proposing, which is another thing that you said, no charter amendments, except now you got in and you, this is the fourth charter amendment, the only charter amendment I think that the city should raise and promote is one that would remove the city attorney's position as being an elected city office. I think this settlement agreement shows that having an elected city attorney is not helping this city. If there's any more proof of it that you need, just read the details of this settlement and get some true estimated costs of what this is going to cost the city, in addition to all of the lawsuits, the audit fees, et cetera, that will be incurred by the city. People are not going to forget this in 2026, when you're running for reelection.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Wendy Rincon, 50-year resident. Two weeks ago, I stood here, and I spoke about our community, our need for coming together, for unity, to find common ground, that we are all neighbors, and I was mocked for it. But Gracie, I'm happy to see that my speech seemed to have had an impact on you, as you have said the same things in your Huntington Beach city post recently. I am curious as to whether Tony read the statement. He was on TV last night at the RNC convention shouting, "Fight, fight, fight," in complete opposition of what you posted, Gracie. What exactly is he fighting against? He and you certainly did not fight the settlement for the Pacific Airshow. He and you certainly did not fight for us, the Huntington Beach taxpayer, when Kevin Elliott sued us, the Huntington Beach community. He and you certainly did not fight for the city's ability to make money off of our own infrastructure and civil services. The Huntington Beach settlement with Kevin Elliott and the Pacific Airshow is jaw-dropping. Elliott was given the keys to the Huntington Beach Kingdom. Wait for it, for 40 years, 10 years, and then he can renew it for 10 years, three more times, that's 40 years. And that's just the start of the riches that Gracie, Pat, and the absent Tony gave him. $3,500, or $3,500 parking fees. Parking spots, they get all the fees. All RV fees. $550,000 for an environmental impact study for a private company. Permits, they've been reimbursed. If it makes money, the Pacific Airshow got it. If it costs money, we, the Huntington Beach taxpayer, are on the hook for it. Police, fire, sheriff, marine services, that's all on us. We're paying for that. They're not even going to subsidize it. Makes me wonder what was in it for Gracie, Pat, Tony, Casey, and Michael. If the airshow brings in so much money, we've been told, what, $100 million? I don't know. We've never seen the figures. That's just, we're told all sorts of amounts. And if that is the case, then why are you continuing to come to us, saying that you're looking at a dire budget shortfall? Shouldn't we be raking in the money? But we don't seem to be, because again, we gave up all of our ways to make money to the Pacific Airshow. Question. What are the majority council members and Gates getting from Kevin Elliott and Code Four? Because you gave him everything he could ever want under the sun, and I hope that Bon-Tep, and I don't know, maybe even the FBI, looks into it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker. Go ahead, Amory.
Thank you, Mad Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight in support of item five, the memorandum of understanding for the Huntington Beach Police Community Foundation. I truly believe that the police community I truly believe that the Police Community Foundation does great things for Huntington Beach. I look forward to the Police Foundation continuing to do so, and I continue to support efforts to improve public safety. Once again, I urge a yes vote on Item 5. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Vandermark, honorable council members. Stephen Quinn here, longtime citizen of Huntington Beach. Sunday afternoon, my wife and I were enjoying an early dinner at a BLK overlooking Pure Plaza. It was an idyllic scene. A jubilant crowd of Trump supporters had gathered, waving flags as passing cars honked enthusiastically. Hard to imagine a mere 24 hours previous, this man they all so revere had been shot in the head, certain death averted by mere inches, or if you pervert, divine intervention. Got me thinking, why aren't these people angry? After all, their political opponents never miss an opportunity to express their outrage. Only four years ago, ostensibly because of the death of a career criminal while resisting arrest, whole blocks of major cities were looted and burned, police stations were shuttered, statues of beloved historical figures were desecrated or destroyed. All the while, the police stood idly by, rendered impotent by their worthless leaders. And yet, these people rallying at Main Street and PCH, only hours after the attempted assassination of the rightful president of this country, were expressing joy. How can this be? Are they not the same people that grinning cipher who still actually believes he's president has repeatedly slandered as white supremacists, MAGA extremists, and as a collective threat to democracy? These same people he so loathes and fears were the same ones who crouched in place after Donald Trump was shot in the head, more concerned about his welfare than their own safety. At a time in our society's decline, when public shootings have become commonplace, they stood their ground when most people would have panicked and run. And then, when he rose up and began shaking his fist at the fools and cowards who tried to kill him, they rose up in a great shout of joy. And these are the people we're supposed to fear? America dodged a bullet Saturday, even if Donald Trump didn't entirely. The people who want him dead want America dead too.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, council and everyone. This is my third iteration of things I want to talk to you about tonight, but I may cut it short because of everything that's going on. But at any rate, it's been a tough week. We had some bad news. And one of the bad news, not critical, but was the approval by the Coastal Commission of the Magnolia Tank Farm development. This breaks my heart. It's a bad move, and I wanted to thank everybody in the community, on the council majority, for fighting every possible ridiculous development. Initially, we trusted the council, the Coastal Commission. It's a flood zone. It's a tsunami danger. It's an insurance risk. It's near a fault, and it's toxic, or it's adjacent to toxicity. Now we see how hard the state will work to approve any type of development anywhere. So I thank you for the resolution and the charter amendment to at least marginally protect us against this. And when communities say the council allowed that development to happen, or the planning commission allowed that development to happen, that is not the case. It is the state looking at trying to develop every square inch of the coastal zone, especially in coastal cities, especially in Huntington Beach. And we need to fight against the state. We need to have an initiative at the state level to get these things mitigated. So there's that. The other thing is, Michael Gates, people must not understand an attorney. No attorney wants to lose a case. He did not lose the case. He settled a case in good stead. We don't know what the initial settlement was, but if you don't know that, you don't understand. And if you think it was because it was in front of friends, you don't know any attorney is not going to want to lose, especially among people that they know. So this is ridiculous. You can, you can pander this all the way to From Sun Up to Sundown, but there are many people here that want the airshow. The airshow brings in money. And check with the business people in this community. We were on Main Street. They all want the airshow. So you can pick at whatever you want, but really, you need to step back and say, if we are all one, how can we make this happen in a way that you might be able to digest? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Jeannie Gooden, a longtime resident of this amazing surf city. Before I begin my comments, I want to thank and praise my Lord Jesus Christ for preserving the life of President Trump. And now my comments. Can you hear, can you hear councilpeople Natalie Mosier, Ms. Bolton, and Mr., for that the winds of positive change continue here in Huntington Beach? We surf city residents are pleased and thank you, Mayor Gracie, Pro Tem Earl Pat, and Councilwoman Casey, for your leadership in making the winds of positive change continue here in Huntington Beach. Your leadership has overturned more than 120 issues that were detrimental to our city. And now, we have voter ID, a no-mask mandate, protection of our children from pornographic sexualized materials in our local library, a board to review children's books in circulation and move them to a restricted section in the library, and block the library from purchasing new books that the 21-member board majority deem inappropriate. Thank you for protecting the minds of our children. I especially wish to thank you for censuring Ms. Mosier's disrespectful, deceitful, untrue, and personal attacks on behalf of Mayor Gracie. Thank you also for crafting a charter amendment, giving us the opportunity to vote on city-initiated zoning changes and eliminating useless committees. Thank you for your resolution to support Israel against Hamas, who are evil, wicked, and barbaric, and whose only goal is to destroy the nation of Israel. God has not allowed the destruction of Israel, and currently Hamas is being ravaged by the IDF. Because of your conservative leadership, we now have national and international requests for information to implement some of these issues. Thank you, Mary Mayor, and for remaining steadfast and professional in your presentations. Because of these issues, important issues, we are now, the winds of Huntington Beach continue to go. Do you hear this, Councilwoman Mosier-Bolton and Kalmak? The winds of November are becoming louder and clearer that more positive change is coming to our surf city. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, I'm gonna... All right, these are the remaining names. Everybody, please come down and approach the podium. Russ Neal, Zignesh Padear, Kristin Altbaum, Bea Chanel, Tim Geddes, Ken Inoue, Karen Carroll, Bethany Webb, Christopher Reenie, Kanan Durham, Catherine Goddard, Libby, and Ellen Riley.
Go ahead and walk forward to the podium. Whoever's ready to speak first.
Hi, everybody. My name is Kristin. Tonight, I want to ask for your support and consideration in forming a city committee made up of public volunteers, including myself, whose task would be to investigate what is working in other cities to decrease the incidences of M-80s or loud explosions being discharged illegally all hours of the night, and make recommendations to the council on ways to curb their use and to seek funding from you all if we are able to demonstrate successful mitigation measures in other municipalities that warrants funding. I believe there has to be very negative economic impacts to our community by not adequately addressing this issue, so more or different funding should be strongly considered. I know from talking to several sources that law enforcement is doing everything in their power to catch the individuals who are regularly waking us up at 3:00 and 4:00 a.m., on my street, anyway. And I have confidence that the majority of you recognize this as a quality-of-life issue worth addressing. For these reasons, I want to volunteer myself to be involved in a committee of perhaps three or four other community members to seek information and hopefully free up time spent on this issue by our valued and overworked law enforcement, who are understandably spread way too thin. To the people who believe patriotism is synonymous with loud explosions, my father, a nuclear engineer, died for this country after being subjected to too much radiation and chemical exposure during our nuclear arms race at Hanford, Washington. I am very patriotic. I enjoy fireworks on the Fourth of July, but I take issue with loud explosions the rest of the year. I believe that scaring your fellow citizens on random days of the year is the exact opposite of the patriotism expressed by the men and women in uniform who are willing to die for their fellow citizens. Volunteering myself to participate in a committee is of interest if, number one, a majority of you are supportive of forming a city committee, complete with publicity, and a mission statement that coincides with what I am asking for today, so that other municipalities and remedy companies know that Huntington Beach is seeking answers and will therefore be more willing and motivated to provide the information we are requesting. And two, that you believe that approving, in approving funding, if we can demonstrate what similar funding has yielded to other municipalities. I know tonight is not the night to consider approving or disproving the formation of such committee. I'm formally asking that you, your consideration, that consideration be discussed at your next closed-door session, and a vote on forming such committee can commence at the next city council meeting. Please let me know if this is possible. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Ms. Altbaum, Mrs. Altbaum, could you please fill out a blue card so we can reach out to you?
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker.
Yeah, hello. My name is Zignesh Padear, a lifetime resident of Huntington Beach. Good evening, council members. You know, it's always fun to come up here and, you know, snicker and jeer your opposite side, whether you're up here speaking for the conservatives or the liberals. But what happened this past Saturday should be very concerning for every American, not just Americans, but, you know, people across the world. We should be taking a stand together, united, to, you know, that we can set affront that this isn't an acceptable behavior. And when we go ahead and draw lines in the sand, when we can't even get behind one flag, and that has to be a contentious issue in the community, it's very disheartening. Huntington Beach has so many different opinions and so many different thoughts, and who am I to say one is better than the other? That is why we live in a constitutional republic where we can vote. And the collective reasoning and the collective thought of everyone here should be able to realize what the better idea is, and that should prevail. And, you know, I just want us all to remember that we are all Americans at the end of the day, and political violence in any direction should be disavowed. And, you know, it's the unnecessary name-calling happening, calling our mayor Nazi, going ahead and, you know, saying all of these unfounded terms and just putting labels on people when we don't even know the truth, so that way people are more unhinged to just hear it and immediately act on it. You know, we're better than that. We should hold ourselves to a higher standard. I know, like I said, it's fun to come up here and make comments and have fun, and I'm all for that. I get it. But at the end of the day, we have to remember we're Americans first and foremost, and we should look out for one another always. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
So a number of people tonight have made public comment regarding the airshow settlement that City Attorney Michael Gates' office finally released, after being ordered to by a judge's court order. A number of people have also made notes of Gates' absence, along with City Council Member Strickland, who are both at the Republican National Committee in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, tonight. Mayor Gracie, who is here tonight, made an official statement on Sunday after the attack at the Trump rally in Pennsylvania. She said, quote, "We must look within ourselves and seek ways to find common ground. We must rise above the hate, the disdain, the vitriol, and focus on ways we can unite." That is a very lovely sentiment. Last night, Mr. Strickland and Mr. Gates were on camera at the RNC, shaking their fists and chanting "Fight, Fight, Fight" with the crowd. I can't help but think that those two things are contradictory. Gates and Strickland were there, to my understanding, as delegates. They then voted on the new party platform introduced yesterday. This platform calls immigrants, quote, invaders, manufactures fear around race, targets LGBTQ+ people, and focuses around a narrative that Democrats are an existential threat to Americans, including folks here at home in HB. I would like some clarity on how Gates and Strickland supporting this platform is, quote, "rising above the hate, the disdain, and the vitriol." All that said, I look forward to seeing City Attorney Gates back home in HB once the RNC is over, so that he can, quote, "Fight, Fight, Fight" for the city, something it seems he did not do when creating the settlement to Kevin Elliott and the Pacific Airshow last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker, go ahead.
We finally get to see the airshow giveaway. Nothing in the agreement puts the city in jeopardy, nothing in the agreement puts the city in jeopardy if and when there is finally a lawsuit against the actual culprit of the oil spill. In my previous career, I used to negotiate multimillion-dollar government subcontracts, so I know a little bit about how negotiations work. Oftentimes, the parties come to the negotiating table with a pie-in-the-sky wishlist and pretend that they must get all those items in order to reach a deal. It seems the negotiators for Huntington Beach looked at Pacific Airshow's list of demands and simply said, "Okay, whatever you want." I only imagine the shocking glee from the other side of the table. They must have been struggling to hide their elation and pretend that you have been a really tough negotiator, like the way an adult pretends a child is good at magic. The settlement states that the city is giving everything to Pacific Airshow in exchange for promises and considerations therein, except there are no promises or considerations from Pacific Airshow in the agreement. It's all one-sided, with the city giving and Pacific Airshow taking. In addition to the $5 to $7 million payout we already knew about, the city is now obligated to contract only with Pacific Airshow for up to 40 years to produce an airshow, unless Pacific Airshow wants out of the deal. The city is giving away all parking fees during the airshow and 600 spaces for up to 26 more days. The city will pay for all sequel reviews and waive any city fees, as well as assist in mitigating all third-party fees. The entire document is absurd. The city was not responsible for the oil spill. Amplify Energy was. HB should not pay out for any liability at all. The figure that is being quoted by the mayor of $100 million in economic impact is not documented anywhere. It's a number from a marketing material that uses proprietary formula to claim there is a huge economic impact to the entire coastal region, not just HB. But even if that number is true, which is highly doubtful, that means HB may have lost millions due to the cancellation of the last day. So why would the city compound those losses by giving all this away? What happened to the council members' fiduciary responsibility they kept claiming when they were considering privatizing the library? Do they forget about that responsibility when their supporter is the one that's going to benefit? We need an investigation.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Vandermark, members of the city council, and fellow residents. Certain council members... My name is Karen Carroll, longtime resident. Certain council members have been quoted saying they can't in good conscience sign a statement in a housing element that housing humans is important enough to make some environmental waivers. True, more building can make measurable changes in air and water pollution, traffic, and noise. But for those same council members, the environment be darned when it comes to the airshow. Let's see. Did you know that fighter jets emit more health-threatening and greenhouse gases than any other single operational unit of the U.S. military? There are actually international organizations that are trying to curtail airshows worldwide. Oh, and noise? Let's see. Does the eardrum-exploding boom and roar of these planes over three days bother anybody? I'm not saying I don't find airshows exciting. I do. Just saying, the optics of the difference in perspective regarding the environment is a contrast, and the optics do suggest the possibility of hypocrisy. I did have a, I had a graph... Oh, there it is. Okay. If I had known I had a little bit more time, I would have brought my animated version with sound effects.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Chris Reenie, Huntington Beach native resident. First, I would like to thank the city altogether for a great Fourth of July. I was expecting ugliness, and instead I found more smiles, high fives, and goodwill than I could have expected in this time of divisiveness and innocent joys may be what saved our country and our beloved Constitution. Now, I'm here to voice my concern about the airshow settlement. I know the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics not on the agenda, but the Brown Act also says, quote, "The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know," Section 54950. Why then did it require a lawsuit to release the settlement? Why then did it require a lawsuit to release the settlement? Now, now, people have already delineated it, the settlement includes a payout of $499,000 plus, excuse me, plus interest on the final installment, writing off old debts, paying for SEQA, a 10-year exclusive contract that can be extended to up to 40 years, and giving Pacific Airshow 3,500 parking spots while the city pays for all that. Now, I'm genuinely confused here. This, the city that's on the brink of a multimillion-dollar budget deficit of proportions, that we had the whole bruhaha over the library, that might have possibly saved up to $1 million? If the money is that tight, yet certain people in the council are proud that they saved the airshow to $5 million, major concessions, and an exclusive contract? Now, my understanding of my life, my whole life, as a Republican who grew up worshiping Ronald Reagan, was that we believed in fair competition and an open market. An exclusive contract flies completely in the face of that Republican value. And again, why the obscurity? And all of this for an airshow whose economic value cannot really be determined. Dave Bratton, the founder and director of Destination Analysts, said the software they use is called Implan. It's essentially a black box. You can't really audit it. It's not possible because the math takes too much time. That just makes me very confused. Like, if this one, if this is the kind of monetary investment and return that would not stand an IRS audit, why do we believe it? Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Tim Gettis here. I'm sorry that Tony Strickland and Michael Gates are not present this evening. Are they simply red-faced with embarrassment, or have they come down with Pacific Airshow sickness? Oh, I forgot, yes, they winged their way to Wisconsin to go and kiss the ring or whatever. But while the rest of the country is undergoing political turmoil, this city council majority has chosen to double, double down and plow ahead with an agenda that may suit its MAGA, its base of MAGA machuganas and fundamentalist flowerpots, but leaves the bulk of the community up in arms about the blatant lack of transparency, its ideological and confrontational style of leadership, its trashing of guiding principles and norms of governing through community, community consent, and its dereliction of duty in serving the best interests of the citizenry. This council majority could not be more dysfunctional. Now, in addition to being malfunctionful and maladjusted, it is, it and the city attorney are guilty of possible, possibly guilty of malfeasance with the Pacific Airshow settlement that not only gave away the store with public funds, but has condemned us for years to fiscal servitude. Compounding this civic treachery is the blatant attempt to cover up the deal to buddy Kevin Elliott in Code Four and bury us with BS. We could fill an LNG tanker with the gaslighting that has gone on. If it wasn't for the legal efforts of Gina Clayton Tarvin, we may be still be in the dark on this scandalous subterfuge. By, by the way, Gina, Gina finished runner-up to the not-so-fabulous four in the 2022 local election. How many voters here, how many voters here would prefer her to any of the current amateur authoritarians on the dais tonight? It is clear we can, it is clear we can no longer trust those who would misrepresent us so horribly. To quote their, to quote their hero Donald Trump and our hero Gina Clayton Tarvin, it's a disgrace.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, it's Catherine Goddard. And over the past few months that we've been watching, a year and a half, I guess, about now, the thing that's clear here is that the four people plus the city attorney that are representing us in deals, I guess I'll say, have not been able to communicate with us. There are several kinds of government historically that we know of. There's monarchies, there's autocracies, there's dictatorships, but of them, the most difficult one is a democracy. And the democracy relies on openness and communication with citizens. What we find ourselves here is that there are five people that are doing whatever they wish to do and keeping we, the citizens, including the three that have been elected by people like me, from any of the discussions. So, in the absence of that, and with the lack of a local newspaper, and with the advent of electronics, we have what we have tonight. No real discussion, no real understanding, arguing, just getting down to the four-three vote and having the veil of the legal system cover whatever is going to be going on. I was originally going to speak about the egregious settlement, but there are no words that have not already been said. What has been given away and what has burdened the next 40 years, citizens and councils, with a, apparently, legal document? It's going to take us a lot of work just to undo that, let alone the things that could happen between now and then, all the whole probably turnover of the citizens, the different thinking from different cultures, different age groups, and that will come in, and whatever happens to the environment, giving away the air, land, and sea is not a responsible thing to be doing. So, with that, I don't understand at all what caused the five to do this, and because we're not able to understand, and only we're able to see what happened by virtue of the lawsuit that's just been referenced, I'm asking, what do we do now? How do we change this dynamic so that this city begins to work for and with one another? How do we work together? How do we create and continue to enhance the city that we love? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Members of the city council. My name is Kenny Nowey. I'm a 51-year resident of this great city. Last Saturday, I was in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and had the privilege to be at the Philadelphia Convention Center to hear our Vice President Kamala Harris. During her presentation, there is a commotion in the audience, and many of us feared for her safety. Fortunately, the people causing the commotion were casually, were lighted out of this, out of the convention center, and the presentation was able to continue. Later that afternoon, much like many of you in this room, I watched in horror as former President Trump was almost assassinated. When I came back to Huntington Beach, people approached me and said, "Could this happen in our city?" And two years ago, I would have said no, because two years ago, this city had a statement of human dignity that respected the right of every individual in this city to have an opinion and to be respected as individuals. So today, I respectfully request that everybody that visits these council chambers engage in vigorous dialogue to express their opinions as guaranteed in the First Amendment. However, I would respectfully request that people leave the vitriol and hatred outside the door that's counterproductive and could cause some very serious damage to the people living in this great city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Gracie and council members. My name is Russell Neal, and I live in Huntington Beach. Everyone is calling for unity, but unity is not the most important thing. Unity is good if we are unified around good things. It is not good if we are unified around evil things. And good and evil are defined by God's law. When we are aligned with God's moral law, we have peace within ourselves and peace with our fellow men. Otherwise, we are only interested in getting what we want by any means necessary. The reality is that today, only one side seeks alignment with God's law and peace with their fellow men. The other side rejects any higher law than their own feelings and desires and acts accordingly. They seek unrighteous ends by lawless means, weaponizing lies and chaos as a means of gaining political power. The current manufactured hysteria about the airshow settlement is a perfect example of this. The settlement itself raises new questions, but provides insufficient information to conclude anything. It merely provides talking points people can use to spin any story they want. Those of us committed to a just and righteous society must not copy their lawless tactics. We must commit to pursuing righteous ends by righteous means. This council majority is doing just that, and I urge you to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
It says a lot that Strickland and Gates felt it more important to flee town rather than cancel their trip and state an answer to the citizens about this airshow scandal. They chose to abandon us, to hobnob with elites, and make political connections. So I have some questions. What actual hard evidence did Mr. Elliott submit to you to show his monetary losses for one day of the canceled airshow? If none, how do you justify settling out of court without presented monetary losses? And who in the world came up with the gigantic 40-year no-way-out deal? Why are you allowing a company without a contract or insurance to fly a huge airshow over our pier, our downtown, our wetlands, our beaches, and our homes? You only require that they have a permit that I guess we are also paying for forever, rather than requiring a full contract and insurance? I mean, you have to prove insurance on a bouncy house in the park, but not an airshow over our homes? And why did you allow your buddy to land a plane on our beach in a publicity stunt a few weeks ago without a permit or insurance? Are you guys crazy? That is an insane amount of liability for our city if something went wrong. Just who is your allegiance to? Because it sure seems like it's to Mr. Elliott and not to the residents of Huntington Beach. What is he giving you? What is he giving you in exchange? We want to know. This multimillion-dollar lawsuit and giveaway is nothing short of a heist. You gave Mr. Elliott the key to this city at the mayor's ball. We didn't know it was actually the key to the vault.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker, go ahead.
Um, I, this is different. I'd like to speak about the city council budget. I'm very concerned that we have a $7.4 million projected deficit for the next year, by July 2025. Every subsequent year after July 2025, the projected budget deficit is going to increase $15 million by 2027. That is not long from now, and these are the figures we received from the Budget Director in the Budget Department. So how do you stop this deficit, cure this? We're bleeding money. We need the money for certainly many important city functions. So what do you do? You have two choices. You can decrease spending for city, city programs, people, staff, whatever, or you can increase revenue. The biggest sources of our revenue are property taxes. They are the largest source of our revenue. I strongly recommend building the housing element of 13,368 homes. And there has been a bunch of misstatements that have gone out concerning this housing element, mainly saying that it's for the homeless. It is, there's nothing in the housing element that is for the homeless, and people have misunderstood that, many people in the city have misunderstood it. And it's based, and it's particularly for the low-income. That is not true either. When the numbers, when you look at, look at the numbers, 585,845 are low-income versus the majority of housing that is recommended or required by the state government is 75, 7,523, affordable to moderate-income and above-moderate-income individuals, not low-income, not homeless. That's the brunt of the $13,000. The biggest group of the 13 million, I should say, no, the 13,000 housing is moderate, moderate income and above-moderate income. This housing element will drastically increase the property tax revenue that will come into the city. We need, we really need to make money, and that will bring a lot of money into this city, as well as increase the money, the expenditures for our businesses. We should be caring about our local businesses, large and small. When you have housing people coming in here, when you build housing, people who go into housing buy everything. They buy from large businesses, small businesses, and hope, and they, and hopefully they'll build within this, they'll buy within this city, local, you know, local spending. That's what I try to do. I tell my friends, "Stop going and spending your money in Costa Mesa or Newport."
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, good evening, half of the council. The other half, I don't know where they are, but I'm sure that they're with us in spirit, underneath the bed or something. But so, you guys, you guys have to understand one thing. There is, there's a budget and there is revenue. Revenue is different than a budget. So when they say, "We have a budget for this," they're not talking about how much revenue they're making. You know, I've been here for over 25 years, and you know, I've lived in here for over 25 years, and the trash bill keeps on going up and up and up. However, we have hotels coming up, coming up, when they're charging $40 for parking now, when it used to be just a quarter for the, for the machines. Where do you think that money's going? Every single thing that the city is supposed to, they charge us for the property taxes, and then whatever, whatever extra money they have, they're supposed to give it back to us in form of a rebate. Okay, but instead, what they do is that they open up the little accounts, you know, just for rainy days, for their pay, for their salaries, and for this, Chewbacca, Inc., and all this crap, so that way they can open up more and more and more. And it's exhausting because they make over seven times as much as the budget. What do they do with it? Do you know how much money we have in stocks? In stocks, preferred stocks, not common ones that we buy, but preferred stocks, the ones that are guaranteed? Those, they've been buying them since the 60s, all the way up until now, and the revenues that they make pay way more than double our property taxes. They don't mention that stuff. You know why? Because it's in the, it's not in the annual financial report, the AFR, it's in the CAFR, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. That's the one that tells you all the stuff. Over all the autonomous, the singular agencies, which are autonomous, autonomous agencies, when they're collecting revenue, they don't even mention it to us in the APR, in the APR. Or what they used to do is, it was called the Popular Annual Financial Report. But you have to ask for the, you have to ask for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR, the CAFR, there's a CAFR. There's a CAFR for the cities, there's a CAFR for the counties, and there's a CAFR for the government. And when you find that out, then you realize that they're hiding a whole bunch of money all over the place. This money that they gave out, or whatever, they don't want insurance on it. They have to get rid of it, okay? And then maybe get someone in the back, behind them. However, it's too much work. They're getting so much money, they don't know what to do with it, because they definitely don't want to give it back to us, okay? So then they take more and more, and then they say, "Well, you know, we don't have enough budgets. We got to raise up the bill. We got to raise up everything. We got to cut down all the social agencies that they have." However, never the DA. The DA always gets a 12% increase, and you can't touch it. You cannot ever reduce it. That's the only department that cannot be reduced in a budget crisis. The DA's office, that doesn't make any sense.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Brian Vea. I'm a longtime resident here, and I'm here to talk about, well, there's a lot of things that are going on. First of all, all these people that are here talking about the court decision that was made, that's been released. I hope you guys were all here when the city decided to put $300 million and purchase the Elon in the Breakwater, because now we have middle-income housing in our city, and every time I drive by the Elon, I look at that vacant building, and I go, "Why isn't anybody in there? Why can't we feel that?" So whoever was responsible for that, I wish you guys were all standing here in line and saying the same thing, fiscal responsibility. We need to stop that. So whatever happened here, I'm all about fiscal responsibility on both sides. Another thing, we talk about culture, and culture not affecting politics and affecting what's going on in the nation. AB 155, which was signed by Gavin Newsom a couple hours, this just happened, which allows schools to withhold information from families, basically separating students. See, there's people here that support that, and that's what I'm totally against. I believe parents should have the best welfare and interest of their kids. This is not about separating kids from their families. 155 is wrong. And you know how wrong it is? Elon Musk just removed SpaceX from California, moving the headquarters. You guys go look that up. X and SpaceX are no longer in California, are moving to Texas. All you Tesla owners up there, who's a Tesla owner? Yeah, all you liberals out there, enjoy that. Have a great night.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Bethany Webb, 45-plus-year Huntington Beach resident. The coward Mr. Burns will still not look at me. In June, the coward Mr. Burns decided to make Huntington Beach a Second Amendment city. A few days ago, there was a mass shooting. I see he can't look at me, but for those of you that can, I can tell you this. As somebody whose family was devastated by a mass shooting, I wish that on no one. That includes somebody I feel is a threat to our democracy, more importantly, the person that actually gave their life, who was a Trump supporter, who is dead protecting his family. There is no reason, no excuse for gun violence. And the coward Mr. Burns, who will still not look at me, should understand that in a tourist city, gun violence and our gun culture from the very blue California, but from the United States, which no Republican has ever won the popular vote, and around the world, where people look down on us for gun violence, your decision, your cowardness that you can't still look at me, and yet you want our pity for the orange dictator? I don't think so. I would have spoken today about the airshow, but I guarantee you, when Mr. Gates and Phony Baloney, who lives in affordable housing, are back here, we're going to talk about the fascist five who ran on no charter amendments and yet are on their, what, third round of charter amendments? And Griselda? Let me tell you something, books are not the biggest threat to children. Gun violence is the biggest threat to children.
Thank you.
Yeah. That concludes public comments.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to council appointments. Excuse me, we're going to continue the meeting now. Council member appointment announcements. Do any council members have anything to report? AB 1234 reporting, does anyone have anything to report? Openness and negotiations and disclosures, does anyone have anything to disclose? City managers report, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Consent calendar for items four through nine, do any council members have anything they'd like to pull? Okay, that case, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we'll go ahead and vote on consent items four through nine, with nine being amended by supplemental communication. Councilmember Moser.
Aye.
Bolton.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Vandermark.
Yes.
McKeon.
Yes.
Kalmick.
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland is absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10, staff, please introduce your report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our new Assistant to the City Manager, Jane Chung, who will provide the staff report for the biannual progress report on our strategic plan. Jane?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. As Assistant City Manager Travis Hopkins says, my name is Jane Chung with the City Manager's Office, and tonight I will be giving you the second biannual update to the city's 2023-2027 strategic plan. The presentation will provide a general progress update, but additional details can be found in the implementation action plan, which is attached to the agenda item tonight. This update has been prepared in collaboration with our executive leadership and their team, who have been dedicated to advancing the goals outlined in the strategic plan. Department representatives are present tonight and ready to address any questions you may have at the conclusion of the presentation. All right, to get us started with a brief background, the city council adopted the strategic plan on October 3, 2023 via Resolution 2023-46, and then the City Manager's Office provided the first biannual update on January 16, 2024. So from here, tonight's update ensures transparency, accountability, and alignment with current resources and policies, as well as gave the city council opportunities to provide feedback and recommended amendments to the strategic plan. As mentioned before in our first biannual update, the strategic plan is rooted in our service vision statement, which embodies our commitment to delivering responsive and exceptional public service to all. Under this vision statement, the plan itself has eight overarching goals, 23 strategies, 98 tasks, and over 70 key performance indicators, or KPIs. Staff has determined that the plan is on track to achieve all eight goals by the end of the strategic plan term. Currently, 41% of the plan is completed, representing a 9% increase since the last update. An additional 43% of the plan is in progress, with 14% upcoming and about 2% temporarily on hold due to factors such as tasks not needing to be started just yet or pending additional direction. The following slides outline the progress update for the eight strategic goals. Each goal update includes key accomplishments, future tasks, and KPIs that were collected to quantify the achievements of the strategic plan over time. To note, we are continually refining and developing our KPIs to best highlight the plan's progress and achievements. Some KPIs identified in the last update have been removed for future reconsideration or revised. We have also added new KPIs with department feedback that may support the overall goal. Actual KPI data will not be included in tonight's presentation, as some KPIs have changed, as I mentioned, or limited amount of data is currently available. However, staff is actively and has collected data to track progress, which will be used to develop a public-facing dashboard that will be made available at a future date. All right, to get us started, so Goal Eight with Economic Development, we have made substantial progress on this goal with 75% completion. Notably, we have updated the 2017 Economic Development Strategy and are preparing to present it to the city council later this year. We will establish key performance indicators after the strategy is presented. For Goal Number Two, we are making strides with 40% completion, with 40% in progress and 20% on hold, as the task will be started at a later date. Key accomplishments include the updates to the master fee and charges schedules, as well as securing $9 million in grant and outside funding. Our future tasks include establishing a centralized real estate program and forming an interdepartmental group to enhance citywide efforts to identify and apply for external funding. A KPI will measure the total valuation of external funding the city receives throughout the year. Regarding Goal Eight, we have achieved 45% completion with 39% in progress and 12% upcoming. The 4% that is represented as hold is pending additional direction. We've launched Streamline Surf City, a citywide initiative to improve the development and permitting process, as well as filling all vacant director positions. Future tasks include presenting the efforts and achievements of Streamline Surf City to the city council, expanding training topics for city employees, and collaborating with stakeholders on a web-based performance evaluation system for city staff. KPIs will measure customer satisfaction survey ratings and participation in city employee With regards to Goal Four, homelessness, we have reached 50% completion. Our focus has been housing, as well as building a robust network with faith and community-based organizations. Our future tasks include working with Jamboree Housing Corporation to develop the Pathways Project and reapplying for the CalOptima Street Medicine Program. KPIs will measure the successes of the city's homelessness housing efforts, including HB Cares and Be Well OC, as well as the number of clients housed through the city's System of Care Network. With regards to Goal Five, housing, this goal is 100% complete following the creation of a legislative platform for the city. Moving forward, we will continue to monitor legislation related to local control and participate in regional agency efforts related to housing. KPIs will measure the total number of policy positions your honorable body takes as it relates Sorry, my notes are sticking here. Okay, Goal Six, we have accomplished 13% completion with 54% in progress and 33% upcoming. Notably, we've completed the water master plan, fleet transition plans, and hired a design consultant to assist the city efforts to renovate and improve beach facilities. Our future tasks include presenting the citywide parks and recreation, sewer, and mobility plans to the city council and issuing an RFP for the Central Park Master Plan. KPIs will highlight the achievements of the various public work plans, and future KPIs related to the parks and recreation plans will be determined at a later time. With regards to Goal Seven, public engagement, we are at 49% completion with 36% in progress and 15% upcoming. Notable accomplishments include the launch of the new city website and the establishment of a standardized branding guide. Future tasks involve hiring a full-time HBTV media coordinator and developing standardized templates and materials for citywide use. Key performance indicators will measure engagements of the city's website and social media accounts, as well as the frequency of content created by the city. And then our final goal for the evening, Goal Eight, public safety, we have completed 11% of this goal with 76% in progress and 13% upcoming. Notable accomplishments include HBFD receiving the American Heart Association Mission Lifeline EMS recognition for excellent pre-hospital heart attack care and security funding for the construction of the Real-Time Crime Center and a dedicated supervisor. Our future tasks involve implementing interdepartmental opioid prevention efforts, completing the special events policy, and developing the Real-Time Crime Center. KPIs will measure community risk reduction efforts, and additional KPIs regarding the Real-Time Crime Center will be considered at a later date. As I previously mentioned, staff has been working on an interactive public-facing dashboard. The dashboard will use the KPI data that staff has identified here in this presentation, as well as on the implementation action plan, to collect and track the progress and achievements of each goal. The images on the screen in front of you are sample visuals of what the dashboard may look like. The aim is to make this dashboard available on the city's website for public use. At this time, I want to acknowledge a group of interns who have been instrumental in developing this dashboard, and some of them are here tonight in the audience today. Collette Nakamuka, Paige Philippan, Lawrence Baldwin, and Michaela Vancillata. To conclude, staff's recommendation tonight is to receive and file this progress update, and this concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you to the interns. I saw how much work you guys were putting into it, so thank you. Does anyone have any questions? If not, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file. Okay, Councilmember Bolton.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about Slide Six of fiscal stability, and you mentioned that the city had obtained $9 million in external funding. What I'm interested in is the net amount, so has staff determined how much funding is lost or foregone because we don't have a compliant housing element?
The grant funding is based on two grant funds we received for OCTA. Any other funding is not included in that number.
So the answer to the question, though, about the housing-related grants that we had been eligible for, do we have a figure yet for what we are losing?
I don't have a figure for that.
Okay, okay. I would like to ask, because I'm just thinking of grant funding, you know, in total, and I'm thinking of it as net, because we have to recognize that we are foregoing or we're not eligible for certain things due to the lack of a compliant housing element. Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Councilmember Moser.
Thank you very much for all of your work on this effort. I deeply appreciate all the hard work and dedication that's gone into this. I do have to say, however, that I am disappointed in the KPIs that do not exist, and those that do, I had asked in January of 2024 for key performance indicators that included more specific measurable metrics and targets, not just completions of milestones. And I do see on here that there are going to be KPIs worked on. I did send, and I did speak with former deputy city attorney, or sorry, deputy city manager, excuse me, Kathryn June, a lot of different possible KPI metrics that I hope will be considered as maybe a starting point. I'm sure that there are better versions of those. But just as a couple of things here to look at, where we did have some KPIs that maybe we could be more specific about, you know, I think what's important is not just having a number there, because it's really not helpful to say, like, "We have this many of this." Okay, and over time, we see it change. But what is successful? What is not? How do we know what we might need to be changing? For instance, as discussed with the grant acquisition, perhaps it could be track the number of grant applications submitted, the number approved, and the total dollar amount awarded. You could say the total dollar amount not received. You could specify that by category. Those are the types of things that I would like to see on the dashboard. In addition to that, let's see, a lot of different versions. I'm not going to go through all of them. We'll talk about them more later. But another one that I think is of value with homelessness, so there were a couple ones- So there were a couple ones that were there, and I know that, or I believe that as we, as I've discussed with our homeless team, there's gonna be a lot more focus on prevention as well. And in a recent meeting, we talked about a lot of different possibilities to be able to measure that over time. I hope that that will be added too. But specifically with the items that are already here, I think it's a number of volunteers enrolled and trained, number of volunteer hours. So, the thing is with those metrics is they measure inputs, but not the impact on homelessness. The next one was number of local faith and community-based organizations partnering with the city. That KPI measures partnerships, but not the outcomes of the collaborations. So I wanted to have a little bit more meat, maybe for the volunteer engagement, measure the impact of volunteer services on the homeless population, such as the number of individuals assisted and success rates in transitioning out of homelessness, and also maintaining that success in staying housed. Also with the partnership outcome, potentially track the number of homeless individuals who are housed or receiving services through partnerships, and measure the effectiveness of those programs. So things like that, I think, would be helpful. One of the gentlemen earlier mentioned for the short-term rentals having a denominator, you know, we need to be able to have something where it's not just a count, and it's not just an item being completed. I'm just looking through any other ones that I think might want to be brought up right I don't think so. I think we'll talk about them more later. But the only other thing that I think is of importance, and it was in goal three, which was high-performing organization. I appreciate that one of the items shows completed, which is item B1, fill department director vacancies in other key positions to lead and provide essential services to the community. Number one was complete recruitment for vacant director positions within three months of vacancy. I'm glad that those have been done. My question there is, should we add on the city manager position to the strategic plan? Because that is another high-level department vacancy. I appreciate that Chief Para is currently holding that role, as well as the police chief role. But to my knowledge, there is no recruitment. Is that correct?
Not at this time.
Okay. So I just think it would be important to have it on the strategic plan, because it is a very important role in our organization. And I think that high-performing organization, we definitely should make sure that's at least on our radar. And that's it. Thank you.
Any else have questions?
I'd second. I'll second your motion.
You have a motion in a second.
Yep. Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Councilmember Moser?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Calmick?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland's absent, so that passes six zero one.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinances for introductions. Staff, please introduce your report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Tonight, staff is recommending the introduction of ordinance number 4230 to authorize the execution of amendment for a pipeline franchise agreement with Cardinal Pipeline. City, this is one out of five oil pipelines that we currently have within the city. We have, we did a survey for the Cardinal Pipeline franchise fee, and we surveyed comparables for the City of Long Beach, the State Public Utilities Commission, the City of Carson, and the City of Seal Beach. Huntington Beach has one of the highest franchise fees among those agencies. The city gains revenue of approximately one hundred and seventeen thousand for the next ten years, including CPI, and staff is recommending for approval of this ordinance tonight. That concludes my report. I'll answer any questions from council.
Any questions? Okay.
I'd like to make the motion to receive, as recommended.
I'll second. All right, let's vote. Councilmember Moser?
Aye.
Bolton?
Aye.
Burns?
Aye.
Vandermark?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Calmick?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland's absent, so it passes six zero one. I'd like to read for the record introduction of ordinance number 4230, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Huntington Beach, amending ordinance number 4008, which granted an oil pipeline franchise. Thank you.
Being that that's the last item, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.